Good evening, and welcome to the Capitola Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, April 3rd. This meeting is open to the public with both in-person attendance at the City of Capitola Council Chambers at 420 Capitola Avenue, and remote viewing is also possible. The Planning Commission and staff are attending in person, and members of the public wanting to offer public comment need to be present. The public can livestream the meeting on the city's website, on YouTube, or on Zoom following the link on the meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is cablecast live on Spectrum Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 PM on Spectrum Channel 71 and Spectrum Channel 25. Recording of the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is Quinn Becker. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting. And we will start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Q?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Here.
Chair SD?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. So, first order of business, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additional materials.
Okay, thank you very much. Oral communications. Please review this section on how to provide comments to the Planning Commission for instructions. Oral communications allows time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any consent item on tonight's agenda, or on any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on the public hearing section of the agenda. Members of the public may speak up for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications. All speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. We will open to any oral communications from the public. Anyone in the room? Okay. All right, please step up to the microphone. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move off to Planning Commission comments. Any commissioners want to make a comment at this point? No? Okay, thank you. And staff?
Thank you, Chair SD. I just wanted to announce that on April 17th, there'll be a special city council meeting to discuss the Park Avenue realignment, which will start, I believe, at 6:00 PM. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item five, which is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar considered by the Planning Commission to be routine will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the Planning Commission votes on the action unless the Planning Commission requests specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. And there are two items on the Consent Calendar today: approval of the January 22nd Planning Commission meetings minutes, and the March 3rd Planning Commission minutes. Do any commissioners want to make amendments to these minutes? No? Okay. In which case, can I have a motion, please? In a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Q?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Yes.
Chair SD?
Yes. Okay, item number six on tonight's agenda is our public hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. The following procedure is: number one will be a staff presentation, number two will be Planning Commission questions of the staff, then we'll open it to public comment, and then bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation, and the last thing will be a decision. First item on the agenda is 115 San Jose Avenue.
Yeah, good evening, Chair SD. I have a staff presentation for the proposed item here. This is a master conditional use permit amendment. Property at 115 San Jose Avenue is also known as the Capitola Mercantile. Shown on the map here is a collection of three different properties and two different buildings. We'll be looking at two of the master use permit conditions this evening. Just to start, I just wanted to give a little background on what exactly a master use permit is, just because we don't get a lot of these. But it's really a planning tool that allows a property owner to work with the city for a more of a programmatic and holistic level set of conditions for a multi-tenant property. For example, the Mercantile has some shared use spaces that all tenants are allowed to use, and so it allows an establishment of a uniform set of conditions for how those spaces are supposed to be used. And there's also some advantages and flexibility with the code in doing a master use permit. And the example for the Mercantile is, at times of tenant changeover, tenants that would have a takeout restaurant and serve beer and wine, they normally would need a use permit, but they're able to, once the master use permit was established, come in for an administrative permit. So there's a savings of time and tenant turnover. So that is some background for what a use permit is, a master use permit is, and I'll get into the shared premises. So this is an overhead look of the Mercantile. So there's this core corridor area that is all shared by all of the tenants, and then a patio B, which is the focus of one of the proposed changes this evening, and then another patio, patio C on the slide there. Specifically, the request is to allow live entertainment through the issuance of an annual permit issued by the Police Department, and to allow more flexibility with an open seating plan in patio B. So typical practice is for businesses that have a regular live entertainment program as part of their business, they get an annual permit issued by the Police Department, and so the Mercantile wants to be able to do that. The current master use permit disallows that as an option. So some of the considerations here, the applicant has obtained support from the nearest sensitive receptor being the hotel. There was some concern, the last time the use permit was reviewed, that there may be too much noise and incompatibility with the hotel next door, but the property manager has now garnered support for live entertainment until 7:00 PM. And the Police Department has reviewed this application, is also supportive, and was able to report that the property operated under an entertainment permit in 2022 and 2023, and there were no calls for service and no complaints. And with regard to the patio open seating, we've calculated that there's a maximum occupancy on patio B of 26, and so recommending an amended condition to reflect that. This is a planned view of the patio, so it's 390 square feet when you take out the path of travel. So the area in yellow would be just open seating, flex seating, for up to 26 seats. And then, with respect to the furniture specifically, this is the existing furniture, and this would just be expanded. So you've got wine barrel tables with powder-coated high-top chairs, and then four top regular tables with matching chairs that are like picnic tables with black powder coat. So these are in your staff report, I won't read them word for word, but this is how the conditions would be marked up as recommended, and it would allow patio B to have a flexible seating plan with 26 seats. And then the other language with regard to the furniture and its upkeep is really just a consistency item with the city's outdoor dining decks, which is pretty relevant in this space, being that it's adjacent to the right-of-way. And then the other one is just that they maintain an entertainment permit issued annually by the Police Department. So staff is recommending approval of those modifications, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. Just wanted to thank staff for taking the time to present this report and everything. So my question is, in the terms of having live music and entertainment, it's a re-establishment of something that existed in the past. That's the situation in the case, and they are successful, and these events do become very popular. My concern is if it becomes overly crowded, right? And what considerations have been taken if there's overflow that either spills out of there into the public safety or the right-of-way or pedestrian access, or even ADA compliance?
Yeah, so certainly, the property manager has a lot of risk in overoccupying the space. And in terms of regulation, in a one-time event, they would be at risk of citation or fine from the Police Department or Fire Department. And then, there are conditions of approval in the use permit if it became a recurring issue, that the use permit could be called up for revocation by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Are there other properties like this that would be subject to, or come to the Commission with similar requests down in the village?
There isn't another property that is operating under a master use permit in the village. There are a number of properties on the seaside of Espinon that have the entertainment permits, the bars.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will open it up for public comment. Start with the applicant. Anybody from the applicant here that wants to make a statement, just step up to the podium, please. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Any comments on this?
Yes, I would like to actually thank this applicant, because one of the problems that we've had down there has been with the hotel, because there have been uses that have really made it difficult for the hotel to operate. So I think, you know, seeing the businesses work together to figure out a plan that's going to work for both of them is a really nice thing to happen, and actually would like to see it happen more often than it often does. And so, for me, I don't have any concerns or issues with what they're proposing right now. I did hear your comment about, you know, if it becomes successful, and, you know, there are people all over the area on the sidewalks and stuff, but I think there are plenty of conditions in the master use permit that would allow that to, action to be taken and for that to be controlled. So I would be in favor of this particular application.
I 100% agree, and I fully support anything to make the Mercantile and the village more fun, and a more attractive place to participate and eat and drink.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'd say I'd also like to thank the applicant also for this opportunity to just increase our economic vitality and the vibrancy in general. And, you know, if it comes to, if there's a situation that does occur for public safety, it's good to know that there are mechanisms in place to be able to take care of it. I'm in full support of this.
No comment? Hey, thank you. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Q?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Chair SD?
Aye. Okay, motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, let's move on, back to item B on our public hearings, and this is 231 Espinon Suite Number 102.
All right, and thank you. I have another brief presentation for this item. This is a proposed conditional use permit amendment for Pete's Restaurant, which has been operating at the location for about nine months. And this is a proposal to serve distilled spirits, so a change to the liquor license. And this is in the same building with Mr. Toots and Margaritaville. It's shown on the map here. So this, the request specifically is a change for type 41, so currently there's an approval for a beer and wine license at the location, and the proposal is to convert to a type 47. Just background with this property, this tenant space has been primarily used by restaurants for the last 20 or 30 years, according to city records. There was an established full bar of use permit in the mid-'90s for the Stockton Bridge Grills, and that operated for about 20 years. And then more recent tenants have downscaled the liquor service to just beer and wine, and they don't need to propose a use permit amendment to downscale. So it's coming back with Pete's Restaurant proposing to go back to full-bar service. And just to give you a bit of background on the space, this is the floor plan of the second floor. Pete has two dining rooms and a kitchen and a bar area, and then two decks for seating. And staff is recommending approval of this use permit, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? This one? No? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. The applicant is here. Want to make any comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kat Cannon. I'm the Director of Operations for Sunset Hospitality Group. Pete's is our newest concept, and we're hoping to, we're excited to apply for a liquor license, and we're hoping this gets approved to operate above our sister restaurant, which is Margaritaville. Thank you for your experience.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. Bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. Any comments here?
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve of...
Thank you. In a second? Okay. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Q?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Yes.
Chair SD?
Aye. Okay, that motion is approved. Congratulations. Now, item number C is staff report on the housing element.
Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on the annual progress report. So, I'm reporting back on all your hard work last year. So, every year, we're required to submit an annual progress report to the state. And so this is the update, and then I'll get into what we're going to be doing next. Next slide, please. So this is just stating that on April 1st annually, we need to submit our report to HCD, and the details of what we've done in terms of housing production, permit activity, and then for us, mostly the implementation of our programs that we've agreed to within our housing element. So in the last year, this slide goes over what was entitled "Building Permits Incomplete" if you go press forward. So this first column, these will count towards RENA once a building permit is issued. So you'll see there's a total of 70 units within that. But right now, we've got the large development at 1098 38th Avenue, you'll remember, with 52 units, as well as multiple, it looks like eight accessory dwelling units and 10 single-family homes. These do not apply to RENA until a building permit is actualized. And I will let you know that the property at 1098 38th Avenue is continuing to try to get financing for the rest. They've got it partially financed, including, I think, 1.25 million from the city. Go forward. And these are the building permits that were issued. So in this year's RENA, we're showing 48 units that were developed in 2024. So here it is, here's the summary by income levels. So in the current year, we did really well in the very low category with 25, 10 in the low, and none in the moderate. And then above moderate is your market-level homes, and there's 13. So, next slide, please. So some of our accomplishments in 2024... Oops. Sorry. I'm done. I'm done. My time's up. So some of the accomplishments in 2024 are listed on this slide. Like I mentioned, 1.25 million towards a project at 1098 38th. But we've really done a lot. We've helped the local mobile home with home parks with a rental assistance, or rent control program. And we've had developer interest meetings, we've put together guidance documents, we've hosted a financing seminar to the public, and we move forward with, we've been working on an application with the Dakota Apartments, which houses 25 low-income households, low-income and very low with disabilities. So we're working on an application to get that building more modernized with a new roofing system and heat that's going to extend into the next year. We've also provided security deposit assistance through the Housing Authority to 12 households in Capitola. We've provided rental assistance, for emergency rental assistance through CAB, Community Action Board. And then, as you know very well, we've done quite a bit of zoning code updates to make, to reduce hurdles to housing within our zoning code. So, next slide, please. And this is a list of the many zoning code updates, and really trying to create more opportunities for the missing middle, and many of the just decreasing parking, removing hurdles as we move forward with housing. So, next slide. So what are we going to do in 2025? As you know, we've started working on the multifamily development standards right now. That's, we've got questions into the state, and once we hear back from them, we'll continue on with that process. Next slide. Commercial redevelopment, this has to do with the mall and our community benefits section. So in 2024, as our housing element was certified, we agreed, both the Planning Commission recommended and the City Council agreed to increasing the height there to 75 feet, and then removing parking garages from the floor area calculation, and adopting new objective standards. So we're starting to do that work now, and we're also, we've been reaching out to the Merlot Geyer Partners to see if they're ready to come to the table as well. So that you'll be seeing hopefully in the next couple months. Next slide. And this is a fun one. During the housing element, we had tried to engage New Brighton State Park and the Department of Motor Vehicles, asking if we could put sites within their parcels, because New Brighton owns quite a, New Brighton State Park, I think, is somewhere about 13 to 15% of our land area in Capitola. And Department of Motor Vehicles, there has been successes in this. In San Francisco, there's an example just north of Golden Gate Park. And so, those are two contacts that we'll be reaching out to again, and seeing if they're willing, if there's any participation moving forward. And then we'll also be reaching out to the school districts and nonprofits, which, we definitely reach out to nonprofits regularly. And whenever there's a house, a larger parcel that shows up in Capitola, I do reach out to them and let them know it's available. So, slide. Our housing trust fund is the funds that come in when new developments are built. So this is our impact fees for housing and our in-low fees. So we're utilizing those funds for, as a state, we're using a different fund for the Dakota Apartments, which I just went through. That will be through some old redevelopment money that we have, or actually, actually, an old home loan. It's program income for a loan that was paid off. an old home loan, it's program income for a loan that was paid off. And then a housing rehabilitation program for 16 homes in Capitola. So this, we put together a program for working with Habitat for Humanity, and for our deed-restricted homes that have resale restrictions, when the property goes back up for sale, they can only be listed at a certain price to keep them affordable to low-income households. We're partnering with Habitat to offer them grant money, so free money, to do updates to their properties that will help protect that housing stock into the future. So the value of working with Habitat for Humanity is some of these homes, it works out to be about $12,000 per household, but we could buy $12,000 worth of paint, and that would paint the entire exterior, because you're not paying for the labor. So really excited about that program, hoping it goes smoothly. But we're going to get the notices out next week to the homeowners, so that's going to be fun. And then the last one is Program 3.4 for persons with disabilities. And by the end of 2025, just looking at ways we can incentivize, such as expedited permits, processing, and fee waivers and deferrals for projects targeted with persons with disabilities. And that's really a focus within working on the rehab project with the Dakotas, as well as like providing them with funding so that they can move forward. I think their affordability restrictions are about two and a half years away from expiring, they'll hit their 30 years. We're really trying to reengage them, as well as the Housing Authority has been reaching out to them as well, so that we can do something in terms of like assisting them, as well as keeping that affordability component. Next slide. So tonight, our recommendation is that you accept the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I really appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into this so far, and I look forward to another productive year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Is the Dakota privately owned?
It is. It's owned by ASI, so it's accessible something or other, but it's a nationwide company.
Is it showing an inclination to remain within the affordable framework?
I believe so. They haven't been very clear on it, but at this point, a lot of their funding is tied to affordable loans, which will expire in about two and a half years. But I think their mission as an organization is to assist at an affordable level, so I'm hoping that it will continue in that matter, but we are trying to communicate with them and ensure that. Out of curiosity, I don't know if this is an appropriate question for the topic, but compared to the County of Santa Cruz and the City of Santa Cruz, have they already had their, everything approved through the state? Are they on track? Like, are they at the same stage we are? I believe they both, I know the City of Santa Cruz was the first to get their housing element certified, and I believe the county is also certified at this point.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic job.
So I forget, you were going to submit this to the state after tonight's meeting? You already did submit?
We did submit it, yep. And I should say, there was a correction that we made. We caught that it said zero density bonus applications, and there was in fact one in the past year that would count towards that.
And then maybe you want to give the commissioners some sort of gauge on the timeline for the zoning ordinance updates for both multifamily? And I know we don't have answers back on multifamily, so I don't know if we'll get it on next month's agenda?
Yeah, so I originally was hoping that we would be able to get through like our draft document in April and then adopt it in May for the multifamily. That has definitely been thrown off schedule. So at this point, I've been emailing HCD on a weekly basis, trying to get a response, to which I have not gotten a response yet. If this continues, I'll probably ask them for an extension to the deadlines, if it gets that far. However, our plan is to start moving forward with the mall, so we are starting to talk with Ben Noble and engage with him and trying to figure this out. I think in May, we'll be coming to you and starting as kind of a work session discussion on those, you know, we're, I kind of refer to it as the gives and the gets. So we're proposing to give 75 feet in height and not count the floor area of the garages towards their development, and in turn, like what is the get for Capitola? And it's, we know it's affordable housing and more housing stock, ensuring commercial, what are those things that we want to see? Great design. So just having that conversation at our next meeting, that's our goal.
Didn't the council just approve money for the, to do a study on 41st Avenue?
Yes, so this is really exciting. The council approved. We have some grant money going towards this, as well as $75,000 of general fund money for a 41st Avenue corridor study, and this is a project that Brian's going to lead. And we've hired a planning group that's also working with an architect, or I'm sorry, a civil engineer, as well as kind of an economic development branding group, to look at 41st Avenue corridor and focus on placemaking, focus on the experience of as people go down 41st Avenue and making it better, kind of creating more of a unified look throughout 41st Avenue, so it draws in not only visitors but also new businesses. So really, that's the purpose of that, and making sure, of course, that the circulation continues to be great, but for more moves than want for transportation, so really looking at pedestrians. If you walk down that sidewalk, or if you've experienced, like there are sections that are less than three feet wide. So I think it's going to be a really exciting project, and as we see things develop on 41st Avenue, we'll have a clearer vision of how we'd like it to redevelop. So, yeah, so I think we'll be bringing regular updates back to you once we get started.
Since we're talking about housing, I had asked Katie before, I think it would be great if we could arrange for the planning commission to get a tour of the housing project on Capitola Road, once it's, you know, close to being completed, but before it's occupied. I just think it would be educational for all of us to have a chance to see it and see how it works. So I hope everybody else...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We can line that up.
Katie, has the city council looked at sort of bigger objectives with the mall, meaning looking to relocate a city hall or a fire department or anything like that?
You know, over the years, I think there's been a lot of different ideas about the mall and what could happen there. As you know, for instance, our police station is in a floodplain, our city hall is in a floodplain, so there have been conversations over time of whether or not to redevelop here or relocate. I think it was in 2012, they were looking at possibility of selling this site and building a hotel and moving city hall back. But other discussions that have happened at the mall is the location of the metro center. So there have been quite a few ideas there. I'm hoping as we reengage with Merleau-Guyer, we'll continue to have more conversations of back to the giving the gets and how we get there. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll open up to the public. Does anybody in the public want to make comments about the, or housing element report? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back to the commissioners for a vote. Anybody want to nominate?
No, we don't need a vote tonight.
Don't need it? Okay, great. In which case, we will move on to the director's report.
Okay, thank you. So first, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize Susan Westman, the Capitola and SoCal Chamber of Commerce. She was awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award. It's the first time that award has been... Yeah, sorry. So I just want to say Susan has done so much for the City of Capitola over the years, has worked as the Community Development Director, the city manager, and then gone on in her career to other cities and made large influences, and then coming back during retirement to assist on our planning commission, has been a great advisor to me over the years, and we just really appreciate all that you do for the city and congratulate you on your award. Well deserved. And then I will follow up with just another reminder, on April 17th, city council will have a special meeting on the Park Avenue realignment for the rail cor, or the possibility of the rail trail being within the Park Avenue right of way. And lastly, an update on Rispin. So tree work is going to begin next week at the Rispin Mansion, and then there's a tentative opening for June. I do recall last year telling you a tentative opening in October before we ran into a PG&E issue, so I'm hoping that we, June will be the date, and we'll have a grand opening ceremony at some point, so. Yeah, isn't that exciting? Yeah.
Nice play then.
So thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting, and the next regularly scheduled meeting is May 1st, I think. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
I know, what the heck.